Please stand for the flag.
I gladly attend to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I'm here, Yody's here, we have a new board member guy, Dave Elton, Chuck Strangens place. Kevin's here, Jer's here, so, alright, I need a motion to approve the previous minutes for the town.
Okay, I would like to amend because it says approval to pay voucher vouchers. It says the council received voucher summary for the month of June. And the council members received copies in their mailbox on Friday afternoon prior to the meeting. But when I did come in Friday, they weren't in our mailbox, so I would like to make amends to that. And we had asked for the vouchers to be here prior to the last meeting. And it was a miscommunication, so that's how come we had to set up a special meeting. But they were not in our mailbox on that Friday, prior to July fourteenth meeting.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the correction and amendment of the minutes. Second, all of the favor.
Aye.
Alright, let's see, need a motion to approve the seven fourteen regular townhouse meeting. Just did that, the seven seventeen twenty twenty five special minute meetings with joint.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the minutes from the special meeting on July seventeen. And we are, they have set their box, so it's, it's nice down by the Water Works office down. Down by the way's working, yes, I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second, all of the favor, aye. Financial, or I need a motion to pay the bills for the town.
Okay, we have gone through them and we have gotten. The paperwork that we have received, we are in process of changing the procedure here. They were, there was a number of them listed and we did check and we did sign the ones that are approved. So they're not, all of the ones that are listed on our paperwork, we're not approving all of them. So I make a motion to approve the ones that were signed.
Second, all of the favor, aye.
Financial report, Mr. Beaver, the town currently has seven hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-six cents.
New issues, trisilia?
Okay, it's still S E L V I A, not S I, but. That's fine, that's fine.
The pronunciation is the same though.
Yes, fine, after thirty-four years, I'm used to that, that's fine. So, I am here, I'm happy myself, my husband and my mother is a property owner. We had a couple vehicles on there and I've talked to Kevin about this before and he knows some nonsense about it. Some vehicles that were tagged and towed, which is not the issue, but the issue is, I don't believe that your ordinance was followed. So this started when my husband came back into town after the Fourth of July and his car went on. And then contacted, walked over to the town hall, which is right next to my granddad's little property just behind here. Car went on and so we came over to see what was going on. And we were, he was told that it was, they were towed pursuant to the ordinance. So then we tried to get a copy of the ordinance. It took me almost two weeks to get a copy of the ordinance. Which should have been available at city town hall for anyone to walk in and see the ordinance. So that's my first issue is that, how are we supposed to be abiding by ordinance that we have no way of seeing? So finally, Kevin got with me, we finally connected, and I have a copy of the ordinance for y'all. I mean, each of you a copy of the other, so. Well, I have a copy of the whole ordinance, that was never sent to me. I have a copy of the one section as it pertains to vehicles. We probably need copies. There's that. So this is just chapter one regarding junk abandoned vehicles. Which, as we go through it, it delineates between items that are on like city streets and things that are on personal property. So, a tag on it is what would happen if it's on a city street. That's not enough if it's on personal property. So if you look down to, someone has one that's highlighted, so I guess we'll direct you to that one. If you look to enforcement procedures on like maybe the X last page, under service of notice. Yeah, page, yeah. Thirty point eight point one, dash three point, or three dash, three dash one point nine, or dash nine. He got the highlighted one, okay, the new member gets the highlighted one, okay. So it would have been that it would have needed been tagged and noticed it to the registered owner of the vehicle. And notice sent it to the property owner. And it left on the property with either the property resident or somewhere on the property. Now, my husband's been over that entire property, it's not there. Tenant didn't get it, my mom didn't get it in the mail, we didn't get a copy. So, it's not proper notice. So, and when I talked to the police department, they were adamant that they followed the ordinance. Which then they couldn't provide a copy of for me. So I don't know how they were following it, they hadn't seen it. So I just wonder how we're gonna rectify this, and again, these cars aren't the issue here at this point, they're two junk cars. But now is the point that if you're not following the ordinance for us, then are you following it for anyone else in the city? And the fact that it was truly the runner in to get a copy of the ordinance. And I, it's just not the way that we should be doing business.
No, there should be a copy of every ordinance in the water office.
I think there is now.
I think.
I think everybody pointed on that one.
He just came in.
May I address this? So, so there, so there, there are, there are some inconsistencies in our ordinance, the way we have it currently. After you and I talked quite a bit, we're, we're having some disagreements, like what's going on with those ordinance. I created new sections, one, two, and three, which discusses the administrative process, legal things, dogs, cats, cars, all that stuff. And then the third section ends up with housing trailers, all kinds of stuff. So I rewrote all those, recreated files for those, based on our conversations. And they'll be available on that shelf right there for anybody who wants. And they're, they're loose, they're loose, and they're also there, and we also gonna start putting them on our website.
Do they have those approved yet?
Those are already, all approved.
Unless if you just re-.
So.
Organize what was already there.
But no, in addition to, I just stopped by people count today.
Yes, in the binders.
At people count today, and we, there's a unified ordinances that we adopted from people count.
They're labeled.
I have them in my office, I'm certainly filing, so they're not in there currently right now. So, those are town meeting minutes and other things like that.
You know why I'm taking a chair?
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
So now, moving forward, the accuracy of those are gonna be as close to real time as possible. We have them up to two thousand fifteen online, and from two thousand fifteen moving forward, I'm reconstructing those. So they're not only available, but they're also the way that we can show you, find the ones you want.
Perfect, thank you.
So do you know anything about this, Greg?
No, this is the first I've ever done anything on it.
Wasn't they supposed to go through the new ordinance? Well, that's when Lisa was in, because they messed up on the vacation pay. Remember that? And they said that they were going to go back through and rewrite it, and I, I think they did. So that we, they brought me and Colin the new handbook. And me and Colin both got two different handbooks. So, one gave us one, one gave us another, may I address the ordinance?
We are currently adopting a new ordinance, we've contacted a company called New Focus. They're rewriting those for us to a compliant state and federal, so that you would have your rights protected. And those things are ongoing now, once we finish that up, clear it up, and make sure the police have their representation properly in there. Employees have their representation there, the board is satisfied with what they see, we'll face that document up. And then we'll do position descriptions, and we'll also do the salary records to match all things.
What's the handbook's difference of ordinance, just to be clear?
Yeah, totally different, different things, rules on how we operate, rules on how you operate as an employee, you know, so different. I hope I answered that a little bit.
No, that's not, because we, we asked for handbooks and the ordinances a while back when Lisa and all of them was, you know, it all went bad. And they brought, every worker brought us handbooks. Stephanie had a different one than me and Colin had, and me and Colin had two different ones.
It's fine, I was looking to, you know, I mean, and I honestly, we thought once I brought this up to Trudy Monet that, and Kevin, that the cars would be back, it would be served to left. Which would be, what would be appropriate, I think, at this time, but that's how much happened, the cars are still not there.
Do you know who told him?
What regulatory company?
I did not write that down, my husband's wanna talk about it, the police told us who it was, someone.
Well, Tommy, Tommy Roberts went through the administrative process of tracking things down for us, and showed me what he had, that it was accomplished. He would be the person that would know now where we are on that, and what had been done since, and he's not here today. No, cuz I couldn't see the initials, and it was like six in the morning or something, until like third.
I will tell you.
I have they, this is what Trudy Monet, you know me, that's all that was, that was provided. So it's a date and then a, there's two of them, I'm sorry, they're not gonna be in the caller. Seven three, we need to know the seven three.
Yeah, July three, pretty early in the morning.
On a holiday weekend.
Greg, he'll build a car another car, and then this lined out. And also, I know.
I, I guess they, you need to bring the cars back. I shouldn't be the one to go get them, they were not towed pursuant to your own ordinances. And I think they just need to be returned to where they were, or we'd be compensated for them.
He's already been handling things from here, I'm not gonna overstep boundaries on him, I'll let him handle it, but I'll get your information when we're done, so he can get all of you.
How long ago was it towed?
July third.
Okay, well, it wouldn't be so soon. After ninety days, you play the record.
Well, I ate, it's time, time, like I kept, kept having, I spoke to some, the police department, trying to get it figured out. And then asked you to set on the, on the agenda, because I wasn't getting it where no one. Everyone seems to think that those tickets on there were what was needed, and again, pursuant to your own ordinances, it's not.
Was it just total junk cars, or did they have place returns or anything?
No, just, there're just a couple of Volkswagens. But again, the old Volkswagen being gone, it's not my issue at this point. It's that, one, I couldn't read the ordinances the first time I went to look more, and two, that the ordinance hasn't been followed. And that, third, I was assured by the police department that everything was followed to the letter. And that wasn't the case, you know, I've been, I'm a criminal defense attorney for over thirty years. And I don't like it when I'm not told the truth by the police officers, and I, I shouldn't go back there.
Understandable, yes.
And that's why I'm standing here tonight, so I'll make sure that they have my information, and then, put me on the agenda next month, I guess. If not, thank you.
And when can we, can we expect the revised versions to be available?
Revised versions of what?
The new ordinances and handbooks and all that, that's gonna be revising and pre grouping.
If you, if you wanted to see those ordinance, I can provide to you anytime, I'm just in the middle of filing in appropriate places. I can get, you could come see them anytime, I've set them right here in part of you, before you've been in your kind of life, that's always gonna be possible.
I just heard you were going through a different company to have this?
No, ask for a handbook, ask for employee handbook.
Oh, I see.
Handbook, salary notice, and, and the salary notice and the, and the position descriptions are ongoing to make corrections, to make sure they're, that's what we do every day. Of the ordinance or something, we do to give us the authority to make decisions to operate.
Right.
Different categories, but you can definitely come and see them as we, as we create them, we put them in this file, and I add them to the proper category. So, I'm gonna, what I'm doing is try to reconstruct that, so it's easier to find them when we want.
Right, that's why I'm saying, how, how long when the, will the new version that you're working on be in the books that we can?
So, probably a week, by next, by the time you come back here next month, they'll be out for your review. It's just a filing process now, yeah.
Are you revising the ordinances, or are you just reorganizing them so they're easier to find?
They can't be updated as we go through.
That's what I was, cuz you keep saying revising, no, you're just reorganizing them so we can find them more effectively and efficiently.
The system that, the system that we're using before, like organizing them.
Right, that's what I just wanted to clarify, there's a difference, so I just wanted to make sure we're understanding the difference.
Up to two thousand fifteen, yes, until I get this right, I'll, it'll all correctly follow. There was a nice book reader from two thousand, so two thousand fifteen, I like that structure. I'm gonna keep that structure and integrate it, and then we'll add it to the new. And like I keep, maybe people said before, in your seven months, I'm trying to patch, patch the road where I can, fix the sidewalk where I can, and I'm tripping and falling along the legs.
Greg, you got any opening issue in here? Yeah, I'll be with the chief.
Okay, thank you.
Police report, Jer.
Come on, you don't, that is great.
Uh, yeah, uh, so far for July, we had an average seventeen point six calls per day, five hundred and forty-seven total. That brings us, year to date, four thousand two hundred eighty-seven. There were fifty-two criminal case reports taken, thirty-nine arrests, seventy-seven traffic citations, ninety-five warnings. And we wrote four warrants for the criminal investigation division. And when you're looking at the numbers broke down, our top six crimes were all drug or alcohol related. So again, it shows that it's a large drug and alcohol problem in the area. They had a total of. Seven hundred and ninety-six point five reserve hours put in, that was free to the town from people volunteering. And Detective Poole has kinda headed up, and he and I have joined the ICAP task force, which is Internet Crimes Against Children. Uh, we joined with Terre Haute City and Vigo County Sheriff's Department. And we'll be doing a lot more in recent months, but just the one month we've been in, we've gotten one search warrant completed with an arrest. And one case right now, we've got subpoenas out, waiting on those to come back. And those are all for child pornography and human trafficking. So, hopefully we'll get more out of that.
Thank you, thank you within mind in keeping the comp time at a minimum.
Still happen, but yeah. Straight primary report, Stan.
Okay, we have the flags for Fourth of July, we needed the retention points and around town hall. Post some rock in an alley, cleared drains, had to deal with the pump house at BK, that's another thing I wanna ask, if it's ours, if it's not. Brian Davis came and, and we went over some things today, and, I mean, it's as bad as the air conditioner. There's no, like the air, it can't even keep up in there, if it gets overheated, it will mess the panels up. Um, the heater doesn't even work in there, so in the wintertime, it's gonna freeze, freeze and, but.
You talking about pump?
Yes.
I mean, the only thing I can think of, we have to send a certified letter to the state to try and get some kind of action, because I responded, and I think I sent to you guys, to the individual who initially mentioned that, I can't remember who they, who they were responding to initially, but from the representative of the state locating that we dispute the fact that that's been officially turned over, because they haven't completed or entered the margins.
So like, they refuse to come here, and if we don't go there and manually turn one of them pumps on, if it's a lot of rain, we will flood.
No, it's a problem.
It's a big problem.
But I don't know, I mean, how, how to get the state to respond outside of, like I said, I sent it to the exact representative to send information to us about that, and there was no response whatsoever.
You have to worry while we're talking about, so the state, every year they build new highways, they shove other pieces of highways down little towns throes. They're trying to make us take National Avenue from Bennett Lane to the cost, to one fifty, would be the town's. So, in nineteen ninety-one, there was a town council that signed an agreement saying, hey, we'll do this from Ninth Street to the caution lanes. In that time, before, there wasn't a pump house built. Now we got a million dollar worth of pumps out here, that has just dilapidated, they don't work half the time. She has to turn them all by hand, they're trying to shove it on us, this town does not have a million dollars to fix this problem, guys. And we're doing everything we can to get out of under it, because it was not part of the original agreement. Original agreement was Ninth Street to the caution.
We hadn't annexed yet, in nineteen ninety-four, West Terre Haute hadn't annexed to Bennett Lane yet, so we were only to Ninth Street.
So we're fighting the state on that, we got the price law.
So, do I have Brian continue to fix this, at least, he said there should be at least two pumps running in case one quits? There's only.
We gotta try to get two of them up and going, we got to, we going at a flood National Avenue, and it's gonna push out water down these side streets, we gotta do something.
So, I don't, I don't know what to do, he, he wants to have a PLC guy come out, hook up to it, and see why the pump that we do use isn't working properly.
Kevin, all the invoices that come in on that, which will be paid out sooner or get into Jer.
Jer, yes, Jer, do some stuff.
So we can keep track of that.
So just keep them in, organize, cut it, so we can jump ahead of all this a little bit, it's only forty-four thousand dollars in that account.
One trip, one trip, four dollars. You can't have, you can't have them here until we.
There are any comments here.
Well, we're trying to figure out where we can come up with some kind of funds for that.
So, are you, go ahead, have him fix the two, two of them?
Let's get an estimate first.
Yeah, so let's put a call.
Yeah, let's get an estimate, and then, then we'll probably need to set up a meeting with Brian and get his input on, on what our next phase can do, and, and, and think about money there first.
Okay.
So that's what I.
Let's get to the state senator involved in this, and we'll get, we'll get something moving, we'll call him, I, we know him.
You can call him, but we can talk to people.
Would you please then, would you take care of it, yes, yes, and then, cuz I know I've sent an email to Ms. Path and, and have never.
Right, we, we know where.
Okay, then yes, do the, please do that.
Because years ago, that whole issue was brought up in a meeting in here.
Right.
And they was told that the town cannot take that on, because they do not have the money to fix it.
One pump is our whole town budget.
Right.
The cost of, right, and they're not working.
Here was my argument, and then Jer's argument is, you signed something in nineteen ninety-one, thirty-seven years ago, from Ninth Street to the lights. And now you're telling us we gotta take another quarter mile with a million dollar pump station that you put in.
One of the county boards accept all that road all the way up to Bennett Lane?
No.
You're sure of that?
Yeah, the only contract they brought, because if there was a contract, surely the state would have brought it in, and the only contract that they brought in was to Ninth Street.
They brought in another one, that I reviewed, but it was unsigned. And it was for, when Chuck was on the board, that was one, I can't remember if he was on there.
Yes, yes.
But either way, we did not sign it.
But it wasn't signed, right.
That goes way back.
The board didn't sign it, cuz we disputed it, and initially, my point was, hey, if they're going to continue to service it, then it's not a big deal until they, initially, they were supposed to come in and walk the whole place with, I think they did at one point, time with Chuck.
Yeah, they walked with Chuck, and said, well, we'll just give you guys eighty-five thousand dollars, eighty-five thousand dollars.
Correct, then they threw out the contract, sent it to us, and then we refused to sign it, so, as far as I'm concerned, it has not been effectuated.
He has, he has called me a hundred and two times, I can tell you, I sent me thirty-seven emails, and I will not sign it.
Who, who is it?
That Bill Smith for the state.
Yeah, that's who, that's who I sent. I sent an email too.
You know, like, like it's.
I cannot see putting out wording on this.
Right, we've had an issue, and I know I've talked to his secretary, and said, you know, I'm just sad, and the state, and he will come out here, and advise us on what to do.
That's what he just said, it was state law, they don't get much.
I'm just gonna be, if there is something in the recorder's office that was reported, I would assume that anything that transfers property would be reported.
Not just with the easement, maybe, or something like that.
Easement would be, I think easement would be reported, I would always report easement.
Right, right, you're exactly right.
But if the state isn't maintaining their own property, then, I mean, is that, is that the, is that the root of the problem?
Here, here's what they did, they walked in on, what was it, May, June, or May fifth?
Like, May fifth at midnight, it was already.
At May fifth at midnight, they told us it was ours, they walked in the front, they went up there, threw the keys on table, said it's your guys, maybe now, walked out. Nothing, everybody signed on there, nothing else.
And there'd be, like I said, I was sad, they didn't even give us advice on anything, you know, that's why we're asking at that point.
What was it, Leon and National? The last big ring they had.
Oh, it's Johnson, I mean, and National, everything floods.
The waterway went out, she finally got one of the pumps to turn on, and the state just told us, you're on your own.
I will give you more freely to advice on that, I'll keep my house check.
Alright, need a motion during the town meeting?
Oh, I make a motion that we adjourn the town meeting.
Second, all of the favor, aye. Call the Water Works meeting to order. Need a motion to approve the previous minutes for Water Works?
I make a motion to approve the previous minutes for the Water Works.
Second, all of the favor, aye. Need a motion to pay the bills for the Water Works?
Okay, and that followed through the same thing I went through and checked, Mark, so everything, everything that is listed isn't gonna get paid, but everything that was signed, I approved to pay the vouchers of, that were signed.
Second, all of the favor. So. Bills on hydrant repair, and he didn't give me none of the notes, so I have no idea on any of it. Okay, so next is. Uh, joint contract accountable vouchers. Is that there? What is that, Eric?
Let me see this, huh? Water?
Yeah.
What, what you adding?
Joint contract and, and accountable.
So that was the.
We already did that.
Yes, it's already.
Okay, so we're good, are we just doing that? Okay, financial report, Mr. Beaver?
So, Water Works currently has two hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred twenty-eight thousand, two and forty-four cents in their account.
Alright, and then. So, all you guys are here, so we might as well explain, yes, our water rates, we've gotta read this, and we'll have to go up. There's no ands and buts about it, we have sent out with American Water. You guys want South American Water, I can tell you what the guys told us, expect a two hundred dollar bill every month. It's, this system has been updated, you got one of the best water filler systems. But to give you guys a expenditure, so you guys know what it's took costs, our flooring's up three hundred dollars a cylinder, faucet's up three hundred dollars a cylinder, with a raise of electricity, it's fifty-eight thousand dollars more to the utility. Uh, a grinder pump, twenty years ago, when it was put in, was only eight hundred bucks, they're twenty-eight hundred, I mean. And I tell you, he's, Terre Haute is running our waste water, it's fully underfunded too. So these rates are just to get them to where they need to be, it's still cheaper than American Water. Right now, you guys can talk to Klein Peter, we have the second cheapest water in the state, this will raise it. American Water's contacted Kevin numerous times, they've contacted me numerous times. You sell it, guys, you're just saying, you get a water leak, your credit runs out a lifetime. So, if you have a second water leak, there's no fixing it. If you guys wanna come in here and we sell, and you guys talk to American Water, that's fine. But there's no way, why set in this seat for the next two and a half years, I'll vote to sell it. You sell that water, you sell this, sir, you kill this town. We own our own water, we can furnish you guys a quality product, your water tests were coming back excellent, you got a state of the art. The water filler system building there is put in, that is the same that the bottled water, Nestle uses in the Sony. We haven't raised water rates in ten years, matter of fact, when Sheila then went out, it was cut eleven percent, we kept it at that bare minimum, as long as we could. But with the rising cost of everything around us, we have no choice, American Water just raised forty-three percent, working at fifteen to twenty-five percent. There's no, there's no ands and buts about it, if you want a small town utility to survive, that's what we have to do. It's just like electricity, when they raise your electricity, you can't go there and say, hey, and, and grouch at them. I know we're all on fixing, I pay a water bill too, guys, mine's a hundred and thirty dollars for me and my daughter, there's only two of us in the house. But I don't know what else to do, if you guys can think of any solutions?
If you, I'd like to add, the client Peter did a, a financial analysis of, of the water some time ago, fully intentions of, of seeing what it's gonna cost to operate in the future. He, I asked him to just sometime go ahead and fix that, give us a report, I have that report, I, I would, I would make it, the whole report available, but it's an enormous amount of information. But I do have it, and I would, if anybody wants to read it, I had to have him come and translate that information for me, cuz it's, it's written like an accountant would write something for reporting to the state, but I do have it, you guys are welcome to see what he's said there. And he says, these numbers do not include any kind of profit, it's just to come up to a cost of operational amount of money, and that's bare minimum. But with, the cost of operations, it has exceeded, uh, what were the last five or six, seven years, from at least two thousand nineteen, we've been managing just with a shoestring, and, and good luck, and that's all.
Kevin, is that something you could put on ours or?
Yeah, I can, I could get that scanned in, I'll, I can get that scanned in this week and put it on our Terre Haute.
And every water rate ain't decided, it's not something we come up with, there is a rate study done, a guy's hired to look at your basic minimum gallons. As a matter of fact, if you look, what is it now, Kevin, three thousand gallons, they pay.
Thirty-three dollars.
Yeah, so, we upped it to four thousand gallons, which wasn't recommended, for, I think it's forty.
Forty-six, forty-eight, or forty-four.
Yeah, so you got, you have, we even up your minimum we use, which everybody else doesn't use, so you'll get an extra thousand gallons on top of that new water increase. It's just something we have, maybe there's no surviving without. Yeah, so you got, you have, we even up your minimum with use, which everybody else doesn't use, so you'll get an extra thousand gallons on top of that new water increase, it's just something we have, maybe there's no surviving without it.
Couple of other things, the rate study guy also indicated was one, is we had to do it to meet our, uh, bonds that we have, but also, if we ever wanna pursue any additional grants with the state, we had to have so much, you know, um, stockpile to be able to be eligible, even get grants to make changes out on. You know, change pipes or whatever, so, it's a multi-layered aspect.
Is the water rate the same for everybody in the county?
No, out of town pays higher, because we don't get your tax dollars. And, and you still get the same service that in-town gets, you still get the same benefits that in-town gets, but we don't get, you know what I mean, your tax dollars goes to Bagel County to help maintain our town.
So there, there is a.
And it is our town.
Uh, you mean we provide the water, but we don't get the benefits from him paying it?
You get the money from him paying it, but he lives outside.
Yes.
He's like, you get the property.
So you got more pumps, more towers out there, you gotta maintain to get the water to him, so there's, it's a little higher outside of town.
Outside of town.
Yes.
I believe that's fixed, and also, that's something that has, like, it could only be so much more than what the townspeople would agree as well, so.
Do you guys have any specific questions regarding the rate?
I do, who did the rate study?
Sean Klein Peter.
Sean Klein Peter, Klein Peter, uh, I'm a news reporter.
Yeah, what was that?
Uh, he just concluded, uh, three or four months ago, I.
He's, he's still not finished with the wastewater, but now the, the water, he's just finished.
And so you're proposing a water and wastewater rate, raise?
We have it both. We, we can propose wastewater until he gives us the analysis of our condition or service, so, he's working on that now, he said maybe a couple weeks he'll have, have some stuff to work with.
And does he available online also?
Yes.
Okay.
And Ed is here for wastewater, he runs Terre Haute, and how bad is that plant underfunded?
Very, very.
Asking how cheap our rates is compared to my else. You guys pay a lower bill, I know it doesn't seem like it, but you guys pay a lower bill than the state, and we're gonna try to keep it as low as we can for these residents.
I will just say, we've lived here, well, we've been responsible for the water bill for thirteen years, and it has not gone up a penny. So.
We have not really.
We are very, like.
Fortunate, yeah.
Fortunate.
I, I've been in this, I've been in this scene, this is, I've been in this scene ten years.
Stealing in this situation. I'm not looking for it, you know, like.
But everything else is going, yeah, everything else is.
I'm not happy that it's going up, but I just wanna point that out, that if you look back on your bills, unless you've done something.
The boardman Sheila, yeah, yes, the boardman Sheila, they was in, they cut eleven percent going out, we tried to maintain that, we maintained it, guys, for, I've been here ten years, and we maintained that as low as we could, but. I mean, just the cost of the lecture, the last electricity raise, and this just gets you guys an idea, the last electricity raise cost this town eight thousand dollars. But it cost you in your house seventeen, twenty dollars, and I get it, you guys are on a fixed income, we're on a fixed, the, the town is limited on what comes in.
You know, there's the filtration system, the electricity, like he said, there's, you know, labor to, to keep it ma- maintained, there's, you know.
I must, I must work my way around with something, so, my understanding is, well, my mom was still, that there's also a, a storm sewer.
Yeah.
Um, I guess an assessment on that. Is that gonna be maintaining the same, or are you looking at raising that also?
Not the storm, no.
Okay, is that something that can be used with our issue with the flooding, because it's, it seems like that would be tied to the.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's, that's tied in together, yes, that's, that's what that one is.
It is.
Perhaps, perhaps there, there's plenty available out of those, out of that one water or sewer.
Storm sewer.
There's a little bit, there's a little bit of old labor, but not a lot of the old labor, and we're gonna have to do an analysis on that whole process too, make sure we can keep it up the way it's going. There are rules, the state and federal, we have followed with storm water, uh, in that system, and we're still working towards a medianary minimum.
I just heard that flooding is an issue with this pump, just going to be, you know, that there was that, and I, my understanding is that storm sewer rate isn't one of the lowest, it's actually one of the higher ones.
We don't have. Twelve, it was twelve dollars.
But there's.
There's storm, there's storm, but that wasn't ours, that was the state's, that wasn't part of ours, we had our own storm water.
Right. Right, okay.
So we, I mean, I don't know. What part you're in, but we have mostly put all new storm heights in the south, we're working to get the north end done, to get everything to retention, ponds or whatever floods, where you got sea water. You guys don't battle too much on the north end, but Gary will tell you, he owns property on the south end, um, if them pumps don't kick on, you got two, three foot of water in no time.
What I was thinking, storm sewer and the, that seemed to be a storm sewer issue and not a, a wrap.
Yeah, no, that, that, that's separate, that's separate storm water, that you got, sure. All right, so, I gotta read this, whereas the town of Wester Hope, Bagel County, has estimated, acquired and financed and awarded, per sent to the code eight-one dash five, amended on the purpose of the providing the. Furnishing drinking water and inhabitants in around the town of Wester Hope, and whereas Klein Peter Financial Group LLC municipal advisors of the town of Wester Hope. Has a rate report concerning the current rates and charges of the waterworks, the report, and whereas based upon the report, the town council of Wester Hope finds. That the current rates and charges for the use of the services rendered by the waterworks do not produce sufficient revenue to pay all legal and necessary expenses, incidents. And operations of the waterworks, including legal expenses, maintenance costs, operating charges, repairs, leases, rentals, interest, and bond payments, as well as other financial obligations to the waterworks. Provide a sinking fund of the liquidations inadequate, to provide adequate funds to be used as working capital and funds for making extensions and replacements. To make the payments in lieu of tax and provided the reasonable expenditures. All ordinances and parts of this ordinance and all provisions of the town of Wester Hope and the code and conflicts within hereby repeal the rates and charges. Herein set forth, which amends the rates and charges set forth in twenty-twenty-two ordinance shall be likewise amended and corresponding rates and charges as set forth for the town of Wester Hope. If any section, sentence, or provision of this ordinance and application thereof to any person or circumstances shall be de- declared valid. Such involuntar shall not affect any other part of the ordinance, and then it, it'll go on and tell. If you guys get online, it'll tell you what our rate increases will be, um, I can go ahead and read this, proposed increase of the month for the water sewer charge for physical year twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-seven. October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five through January first, twenty-twenty-seven, the Wester Water Utility proposing a water service charge. Rate increase for all meter sizes, five-eighths of an inch meter, three-quarter of an inch meter, one, one-and-a-quarter inch meter, inch and a half meter, two-inch meter, three-inch meter, four-inch meter, in the base illustrated below. This, the sub consequence years, twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven allowable gallons will charge reducing the minimum allowable water per meter size. So, a lot of it has to do on your rate increases, your meter size. Uh, to enhance rate structure fairness and Water Works Utility will transmit the AMWA M-dash-one meter equivalency method, which determines minimum monthly charges based on the meter size. Industrial size equivalency method, which determines minimum monthly charges. That's it.
So, it, it states here, three thousand gallons for five-eighths and three-quarter inch meter, which is your common household, for three thousand gallons, your minimum payment is gonna be forty-eight sixty-five. And then it goes up from there, if you have a one-inch meter, you'll, you'll be allowed, uh, six thousand gallons, and your minimum is seventy, seventy-nine, but I do believe our one-inch, uh, meters are, uh, commercial, are for our businesses.
A lot of new homes are getting one-inch meters put in now, yes, a lot of the new homes are putting them in.
So see if you're, if you, if you build a new home and you want a one-inch meter, then, then your minimum payment will be seventy, seventy-nine.
Yeah, most of them, most of them are half inch, five inches.
Right, right, so.
And this is just the first reading, guys, we got two more readings on this and more discussions, so.
Is this all, is this all online, want you reading?
Yes.
Yes, and, right after the meeting, Kevin's gonna make copies of these, we'll open up my personal, if you guys want a copy of them.
Oh, good.
One thing, grab also a note, residents' water changes, because this note is twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, residents will not change anything about that rate for twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, those rates will not change, what you see now is what it'll be for the next few years. Uh, other places will, will experience something different, so, the regal kind of schools, married to and die, corporations that use water, their, the meters are larger, and the water consumption will be reduced each year a little bit. It may increase revenue, depends on how much they use, but it's built in of those blocks, so that, that they're charged more for the consumption over time, the rate changes over time, here, guys, residents will not.
But you guys, I mean, you're welcome to click on American Water and look at their rates for the last two, three, four years, how many times they went up compared to what this town did. I'm out of the past wars, I'm out of this war, um, which, as you guys know, I got two new board members, they've kept this water as low as they could forever. It's either you adjust or you die. And, you kill this water, you kill this sewer, you kill this town. You don't have, you know, a corporation, you have a water leak one time, you know, one time life for that, here, you have a water leak, but we can adjust that two, three, four, five times. We're not a corporation or a small town, we're only a thing right here.
City Green Catholic get one per year, just as for a, a reference.
See, and we also, we, we also too have a sprinkler rate too in the, in the summer months, you know, if you call in and let them know you, you have a garden and you have a swimming pool, then, then they kind of adjust your, your wastewater rates, because.
But they all know.
That'd be nice.
That water is the eye, and, and, because we know that water is the one.
Green Catholic's their water, don't they?
We do, and I'm on Water Works, and so I can tell you that we raise rates twice in the twenty years I've been on Water Works, um, and aren't comparable, your storm sewer rate's a little higher than ours. Um, we have a very new storm sewer, we started out very, very low because we weren't able to design what they get. Feet thirteen, so it's, we're, I mean, we're looking at those rates, and we're getting ready to put them, advise our county council, our city council to put it on, um, I think mine's a little bit higher, our water's a little bit higher than mine, so I looked over the last time. But, and we do, and it's expensive, I mean, and it, it changes, and, you know, I D M does mandate what you can do with your water and how you can do it, I, we, we went through that when we gained, you know, we went over ten thousand, and we had to make, we spent about three million dollars that year because, uh. Our increase in a couple of citizens, so, I understand that, I just wanna make sure, you know, that everyone's aware of like rate changes and what it's gonna be, and like how they think from this hour, because it's, it can be confusing, so.
Yeah, it is, it is very, you know, I mean, just like us, we went to a T-four station, because we took Sanford Road, and we didn't even know it for five months, we had to have a different water operator.
I will say that my pressure is much better than my mother's and my mother-in-law's, I think that's something that we need to talk about some way.
I can address that, uh, right now.
Then you can, because that's something.
On, on, on new, have a new water manager operator, who's going around now, has, he, he, these supplies, he's gonna test every pressure, every meter, it's gonna be going up for the next few months, and he's gonna try to address those threes and four pound pressures, and come up with solutions, what's going on there.
Great, 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 thank you.
Yeah, and for the first time in Wester Hope history, we have a T-four water operator that worked for the town, not paying someone to sign off.
Yeah, I thought that was gonna lower our cost, you know, when we're raising the water bill, that's kind of a contradiction.
How would that lower your cost?
Well, you said in the last meeting that we're gonna have to pay for the licensing and all, for a higher bill for twenty-some dollars now, or?
Yeah, but you're, you're paying someone, now you're paying an employee to do it, you got a working employee that's out, so it, it, it will fix, it will lower your cost, not on a water bill, but it will lower the, uh, when you're paying dirt lines for nights a month.
We will not be settling on draft.
And we got a guy that can dig. Have it come to, uh, anybody else got a question or this?
Or at least they're gonna try to loop the water in out there by where you used to live out there, so, they've been talking about that for years and years.
Does state still handle stuff out there, I, I don't know what they're gonna do.
We can build a new pumping station out there by, legally.
I stopped that.
I didn't know there's one.
I didn't hear the water. So it don't set stagnant, yeah, I don't know what they got planned there, because they still doing a bunch of stuff out that way with that tower, everything on the line, so.
When it comes to making ticket investments on new extensions, we have a process we have to go through legally to say that we met the standard to go forward, and with that new, uh, welcome center coming on, online, and that water tower, there's also extensions possible out there. With proper due diligence, we can pick up some new clients, and, but we have to pay for the installation stuff, so these things are all on the plate, but it's a money thing, and with grants and other proposals still on the table, we have a lot of work to do. But, yeah, even, even water needs work.
Because, you know, you realize that even if we run a main, you know what, it's a, it's the property owner to run to their place, you know what I mean, you still, or we just have one that had like a hundred and twenty-five feet, and they thought, well, I can't afford to run.
Yeah, we just.
A water line now, you know what I mean, you, the people that live in the country that have a longer, a longer way to go from our main to.
I know at one time, Darwin Road ninety-seventy Marathon was gonna build a truck stop out there, that was bigger than Pilot and everything, but Wester Hope wouldn't run many waters.
Now, we just worked with Love's, Love's was just here, but to get the water out there.
We can't, we can't go.
I mean, this is thirty years ago.
Yeah, Love was just with us.
I seen the loop prints.
Love was, was just with us, and so many dollars to get it out there, and then they looked at a different location, but.
They only got one marshal.
Yeah, so.
When it goes going under seventy, it's a whole different bucket for us, the state has to do that kind of evaluation, that's why we were fortunate to hide it in, got involved in the welcome center, we may have never gotten across.
It just cost them six million dollars to get under seventy there.
Now, don't they run water from Terre Haute to Dresser, across the river bridge?
Only the first block, only the first block.
But they run it across the bridge, so why couldn't they run it across the bridge?
We call you, you're coming across the river, you can't cross the federal interstate with water like that, they will make, that's all what I did.
I did, I did, we left that town, I don't know the rules, because it would've been cheaper.
Yeah.
But, uh, they said have a board on to the highway, which is a wholly different set of rules, and that's what we had to buy up there.
And that's about the only place anywhere in the country where there's no big truck stops at an interstate, at a rest area, or anywhere. You go, you go all around the country, and any exits, there's usually some kind of business there, but there's not, there's never been anything at Darwin Road.
Wouldn't be a great location.
Hell, yeah.
I agree, uh, truckers are having more and more trouble as we go, having places to even put their trucks and set them up, so, it would be ideal, I've heard that, because they would rather go all the way through Indy, go to Richmond, just before Chicago, if they came.
All right, need a motion, Jared, for water?
Go ahead, Simon.
Go on, he.
Was that the public hearing?
He's like, you'll be okay.
You have, you have a public hearing, you have a public hearing, and then close the public hearing?
He's, he's trying to close it now.
Okay.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I have second, all those favor, all right. Yeah, now, I, uh, make a motion to close.
Make a motion, we re-open the waterworks meeting.
Second, so the man left on there is utility report, and Mr. Err is out with a mess right now on fire hydrant, so we do not have a utility error. So I need a motion to adjourn the waterworks meeting.
Make, I make a motion that we adjourn the waterworks meeting.
Second, all those favor, all right. All right, need to call wastewater meeting to order, need a motion to pay the vouchers for wastewater?
Okay, and there again too, um, I have went through the wastewater vouchers, and I have checked marked the ones that, uh, we had the vouchers for, and I make a motion that we. That I approve to pay the vouchers of which we had physical, that, that were signed.
Second, all those favor, all right, yeah, all right, need a motion to approve the previous minutes for wastewater?
I make a motion that we approve the previous minutes from the wastewater.
Second, all those favor, all right, all right. Ed, it's your floor, bud.
Uh, the total monthly flow for the month of July was one point two five million gallons, you're at forty-five percent capacity. The ammonia was at ninety-nine point two percent treated, your phosphorus was at ninety-three percent treated, your suspended salts was at eighty-eight point six, and your BOD was at eighty-six point four, which is a little low, but we're cleaning up the plant now. That's what, uh, the employees will be focusing on for this week, is getting the plant cleaned up, getting it back into shape, so that we could step back, take a look at what parts we're gonna have to get for the, for the future. To repair the pumps, the grinder stations, and all your main lift stations, uh, quotes are coming in, we'll be handing them over to you guys to, to take a look at, but, as you know, this is, this has to happen. This, this is, these are, these are quotes, but these are the best quotes we're gonna get, and, uh, yeah.
Yep, none of you guys know Ed, he runs the Terre Haute wastewater. Yep, none of you guys know Ed, he runs the Terre Haute wastewater, and he is now helping us with West Terre Haute, to get our, your own guy trained, and we'll get their license one day. And get everything up to par, keep us in compliance, if I did.
We're trying.
Hey, would you entertain a meeting with client Peter, sure, the financial advisor, we were going through some numbers today, and, uh, he's got a pretty good view. But would like, of twenty-four, which is his analysis, would, uh, he would like to get a little bit more picture of what's going on now, what will be going on in the next few months. And maybe we could have HWC a part of that conversation, so we have a great picture of where we're gonna go and how we're gonna get there, is that something you would do?
Yeah, 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 just let me know when, when and where, and then we'll all sit down and have a talk. You know, I could just, I could just tell you that I've been at the, at West Terre Haute wastewater since two thousand fourteen, in some form capacity. First with Terre Haute, now then as the operator record at, in two thousand and eighteen till now, and the pricing is ridiculous. You know, I was paying thirteen hundred dollars for a Myers pump for, for a grinder station in two thousand and eighteen, they're twenty-three hundred dollars now. The, the town has never raised their, their zero rates in that little time, but yet the price of pumps keeps going up, and it's just not sustainable no more. The, the plant is suffering from it, and moving to a different grinder station like we talked about, to more of an E one, will be a benefit to this town. It's a little more than a Myers, but overall, dropping in an, an E one pump, anybody can learn how to do it, it's super simple, there's only wires to connect to a box, and that's it. So, it's just, that's, that's the direction I wanna take the plant into, and, and this, the sewer system, that's just the way it needs to happen.
Thank you, thank you Ed.
All right, open issues, I got an invoice for HWC, it's invoice eleven, for the amount of ten thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars, this will not be paid by us, it just needs to be approved. In the meeting that's submitted to Christie Gerald.
Okay, and that's for Christie Gerald, is that for our grant administrator? She had written, wrote a grant, okay, I make a motion, um, to, let's see, to pay ten thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars. Okay, I would like to announce before we close the wastewater, is I am in the process of constructing a ladder. We are going to put together to, uh, start passing over our charges to our homeowners on the grinder pumps. They take a toll, um, people are putting the, the grease, um, you know, a number of things, harsh chemicals that eat the harness of the wiring. Um, so, and I know our staff is all equipped with cameras, so when they go out to repair, if we find that it is in fault of our customers, we're gonna come up with a cost to, to put that cost over, because we can't, uh, we can't afford to keep on absorbing the cost of replacing these pumps, the labor, our equipment, it wears out our equipment. So, um, and it, look forward to that, that's gonna be happening, because I'm in the process, and of course, it's gonna go to, through our attorney first to make sure the legalities are right, but, um, so there's something else that, that we are working on, so that the town doesn't have to keep on absorbing the cost, and then that way, we have to keep on doing them rate increases. Yes, Sheila?
There should be something already in the butt, similar to that, three times they were called out, that owner had to replace and repair.
Okay.
At their own cost, so there should be something similar.
Do you have a date on there that maybe we can know a general area where to look at that, that might be?
I would have to go home and look at some of my records, but there should be something similar, because when we first put, started putting in new grinders, and they started going, Mr. Mann and I both spoke about it. It's repetitive, the same people, over and over, because they were doing what they weren't supposed to.
Right, right.
But they didn't have to pay the penalty for it, it was us the town that had to fix it. So let me go home, do some homework and look at my books, because there is something very similar, but I, if I remember right, it was after the third time, but that should be after your first warning.
Yeah, we just dropped a pump in on, where was it, Sarah Myers, Bailey?
Yes.
In three days, a lady burned up her pump because of baby wipes and.
And tampons.
Yeah, there should be something similar, let me go home and do.
Okay, yes, would you please? Thank you Sheila, thank you.
You see, I have to mean, I've got a document you can read.
Okay.
All right, uh, need a motion to adjourn the wastewater?
We didn't even get the, did we get the financial report on the wastewater?
Nope. So, the wastewater, the wastewater, what is it?
Wastewater.
Wastewater is one hundred sixty-six thousand nine hundred seventy-two cents.
All right, nothing new, open issue to current, need a motion to adjourn the wastewater meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn the wastewater meeting.
Second, all of the favor, all right, okay, need to call the stormwater meeting up order. Need a motion to approve the previous minutes for stormwater?
I make a motion to accept the previous minutes for the stormwater.
Second, all of the favor. Uh, need a motion to pay the vouchers for?
Uh, I didn't get a copy of any vouchers, I don't believe any vouchers are, there is any, they, so, yeah, so I got.
Uh, financial report Kevin?
So right now, stormwater, forty-four thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents.
New issues, none, open issues, none, utility report, which is staff, she gives the screen report, uh, need a motion to adjourn the stormwater?
Need a motion to adjourn the stormwater.
My second.
All of the favor, all right.
My.
All right, public forum.
Yes, ma'am. I have two issues, okay, first, um, I understand the cause of the storm drainage in my area. I live on the corner of Church and Miller, that road was paved, the storm drains were paved over. This year has been extremely wet, we did new landscaping, and it's all washed out, because anytime there is any rain, it comes straight onto our property.
Did you pay them, say they over your storm drains?
Yes, is the way I understand it, there are no storm drains near us.
Ma'am, are we, do you guys know where they're at?
Oh yeah.
But, you know, I mean, you can see, I, I believe it's the same side where it dips down, you can tell that there was something there, and I've asked if we could cut it open to see, but then I get told that it's just a holding thing, um, so I don't, I don't know what to do.
Do you know if there's storm drains flowed before?
Um, if my husband was here, he could tell you, he grew up in this house. This has not been an issue in previous years.
Just now, since they repaved.
Well, it has been, it, it was repaved not too long ago, I mean, in the last ten, fifteen years. But in the last five years, it's gotten worse, and this year it is, of course, I decided to landscape. It's all literally gone, rocks, everything are gone.
Well, we had remnants of rain too, also, this is the, you know.
Well, but it's coming up to the sidewalk, now we cannot get to our car, I have yellow, bright yellow rain boots, when it rains, so that I can go out to my car.
Let's see if we can find anything on the stormwater apps, have you looked?
There's a bunch of places where it shows there's drains, but there's not, I try, I.
And Steph has been, she has been super, she is the town's angel, winter and summer, I mean, she does. I would put her up against any man around, I'm sorry, but I, I have witnessed her, I've spoken with her, but this is really becoming, and now our basement has had some flooding.
Is that in your tip area Shane?
That is likely the area. First Miller is likely the area.
I mean, I'm sorry, I mean, the curb is worn down, which is not, well, it's worn, it's not worn down necessarily as much as the pavement has came up to hurt. So, we, our, our, our corner, and then when the house fire was, that was.
Well, so.
There was nowhere for that water to go.
You guys are in a tip area, which so all the taxes from the Dollar Store to the Marathon, over to Parish pays in a separate account.
Family dollar.
Uh, family dollar, so I think we got a hundred and seventy-some thousand setting our ways to get ready, look at doing some sidewalk projects, so give me your address.
She went over to West Miller Avenue.
I, I'll write it down.
Literally the corner of Church and Miller.
Okay, can you say your name, please?
Mary Pruitt.
But if there was drainage there, and they went and repaved over it, are we responsible, since they paved over it?
No, not if they paved over it, by I think, what it was, remember she like how nice street, we had to have a whole bunch of tanks, like, by Bobby Williams.
Right, but if there's still a whole being area there, at least it would've kept it from flooding.
We did pave over it.
No, 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 but at least it would've held it until we could connect and act, put proper drainage there, but whoever paved over it should be the one to fix it. Responsible to unpave it, repave it properly, so it doesn't flood.
And we're one of the few helm owners in that area, there are a lot of rentals, so a lot of people aren't gonna stay.
And they had clues, so that was all a grant, so the IDM guy and the state walked through that property, they inspect everything. So, before we pay them, the state guy gets in here and says, here's a punch list, you guys go look at it, so they, they approve it, we pay it, and then they're out of here.
And there's, and there's literally not a storm drain near us, and you have to go to one fifty.
That's why somebody in West Terre Haute who works here, who knows it, should go with them while they're doing their punch card.
I think some did on some of them, and then Chuck did on some of them.
Look.
This has been a years, this has been several years since it's been paved.
Oh, that's, you got, we got in, because we got in ten years ago, or I got in ten years ago.
It, it was paved right around in there, we moved here in twenty fifteen, and if it wasn't paved that year, it was the year before.
Okay, because I made it twenty sixteen, so that was even.
So, I'm just saying, it's gotten worse as the years have gone on, everybody knows this is a bad summer, but who's to say next summer's not gonna be worse?
Yes.
I mean, I, I'm trying to make the house look better.
I understand.
And five hundred dollars down the drain, literally, well, no, not down the drain, down the road.
Down the road, right.
Yeah, no drain.
Because we had no drain. So that's, that's my first item.
Okay, why, for a second.
My second one, and I know this was brought up last week, last month, and I'm gonna bring it up myself, I have attempted to contact community center. Um, I have made five attempts, have not heard back from them, so I'm coming to town board. No, no.
Just get with me at the end.
No, I'm gonna bring it, no, I gave you five times, I gave you six weeks, I'm not gonna wait now, I'm making this public. The fireworks, my, my brother-in-law is autistic, he had just gone to sleep, we had no notice of fireworks going off. He woke up, we spent a week getting his anxiety back under control with medication. If there had been any notification, don't say it was on Facebook page, I've triple-checked. I looked up, the city, or the town has an ordinance for noise.
After what?
No, it says, and I'll just read it, it's or town ordinance ninety-five point O two. It shall be unlawful for any person to make or continue or cause to be made, or continue any loud, unnecessary, or unusual noises, or any noise which annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, and safety of others within town limits. According to fireworks ordinance and law in Indiana, fireworks cannot be used on public property, school property, or another person's property without their permission. Additionally, fireworks cannot be used within two hundred feet of permanent structure, a vehicle, or a person. Indiana law also dictates the noise level of fireworks cannot exceed the level of sixty-five decibels when measured at a distance of fifty feet. We live, we live a half a block from where they were put out. He has lived in this house for sixty years, he, we would, and had we known, we would have left and gone to a hotel, but we shouldn't have had to. That was extremely dangerous, it disturbed animals, sleeping babies, PTSD, and anyone with sensory issues. So, I want to know if there is a way for an ordinance to be placed, or just what needs to be done, so that next year, I, I, we have lived with neighbors shooting off fireworks here and there, and in fact, he kinda enjoys that because they're random, they're short, and they're not that loud. But fireworks on July fifth, I, you can laugh, Dave Alpens, I don't care.
I'm not laughing, I'm just sitting here.
He literally got out of bed, holding his ears, and was, it took us a week, we had to take him to the psychiatrist to get his Xanax increased for his anxiety. That was unexcusable, even if the community center had put out fires around the neighborhood, but they didn't.
I, I, you know what I understand, you know what, I sit here on the town, I didn't even know that it was going on at the community center, and you know what, I'm thankful that our community can offer something like that to the townspeople that can't get across the river, you're exactly right, but, but more, yes, but more advertisements, yes, I do, we should have taken it, because of that, because of, yes.
In a residential area.
Yes, the houses are closing, yes, everybody should have known, you know, it wouldn't have taken nothing to knock on the door, hey, on, on this night, on the Fourth of July, we're gonna have a fireworks show. You're invited to come over, come down, bring your lawn chair down, you're exactly right, a couple of flyers would, and I, you know, I understand that, yes.
You look out your window. People, people should have the right to go see the fireworks, but not have the fireworks enforced on them, imposed on them.
I, I understand that, yes.
And, but I don't know what should be done.
Right, and, and that's my personal opinion.
But like I said, this house has been in the family for seven, six, sixty-five years.
Right, right.
And we, I have been part of the community center board, I value what they do.
Yes, yes, they give back to our community and understanding, yes.
This was huge, in my opinion.
Exactly right, and you know, I do, yes.
As you can tell, I'm a little worried, I'm overprotective of my brother-in-law, but I also live with him.
Right.
You, people don't have to be up all night long, because he's up all night long. Have we known, we would have gone to a hotel.
Yes, and, and that will be.
I'm not asking the town to go around him.
And, and next year, when it gets a little closer, you know, and we can sit here and, and we can advertise, you know, as it gets closer to the Fourth of July, please.
I will help make those flyers and help they check into the rules and the regulations, to make sure that they're far enough away from those homes, and help they put out those flyers.
But there, there was no way they were right, but then they thought.
Thank you, thank you, yes.
I am on the holiday committee with Dave, who helps throw those events, so I promise you, I will look into those things, make sure all of the rules, regulations, make sure all of those things are met for next year. And I will also put out those flyers at least two weeks early.
I mean, that would be helpful, but you know.
I'll definitely make sure I take care of that for you.
I'm just saying, there needs to be, I, to me, we're at a point where I couldn't even get a response.
And it was going loud, because when Earth was going, Lady Island Lakes was going, at the same time.
We couldn't hear Lady Island.
Well, I know, you're right, you're right.
We were right there.
Yes, but it would be just the outskirts.
I mean, I, do we need an ordinance for in-town fireworks, just like, you know, once are gonna last more than I'm, I mean.
Advertisement, advertisement.
And then I want it enforced. Because, and like I said, I would have.
We got one cop that lives right around at night, right, uh, noise ordinance, he does it all the time.
I would, I would not have even changed the town board, had I been able to get response, no response, here I am, six weeks later. No response, here I am, six weeks later. And like I said, and I watched last week's, last month's town board, and I was disgusted with the way people were treated.
I'm, I can't even walk and I keep my grass cut.
And I appreciate that.
I wish my walk was growing this fast as the grass did. If I else guy like a public forum?
Yeah. Me? Alright. Alright, I have a little issue Shane. I called you on seventeenth about trying to get my paperwork for this board. Blew me off. You told me you was gonna give me answer and you didn't.
I didn't even know, these are your two delegates.
Hold on for a minute. She knows, she got herself on board, you could have asked her for me. I told you, you're the town board president, what else won't you know? If you're the town board president, you can't tell a taxpaying citizen how to fill paperwork. All you had to do is go, ah, you poke the bear, all you had to do is go through the.
I I told you, no. What'd I tell you?
Dave, no offense, I'm glad you're on here. This ain't got nothing to do against you at all.
I told you, call Ed. We don't appoint.
You told me call Dave, you told me call Edlin the day that it was too late. He called me at seven thirty at night, told me I only had till five thirty that night.
Jody, when do we know? And these are your delegates to work for him. I don't work for him, I work for this city. That is a Democrat chair, that has nothing to do with this board. That Joe Elliott handles that, not this board.
I never, I never even got no letter of.
And and that's the one who picked.
This has got nothing to do with Jody either, no offense Jody. This is me and you. You told me on the phone in personal conversations and other things, but I don't spread gossip, because I'm a good Christian man, and I believe in truth, transparency.
I didn't know, I didn't know that happened.
You should have said, Sean, I don't know. That's not what you said.
I told you, call Joe Elliott.
No, you texted me to call Joe Elliott after I text you a nasty little message. You said, and this is exactly what you said, I don't know, but I will find out, Sean, because I'd like to have you on this board. That's what you said. That's not what you done, that's what you said. So I will, just so everyone here here knows, and I hope this is on YouTube, City of West Tera Hope, when this election comes up, you want change? This is a mess. I will be running. I didn't want to, but I will be running. And I'm telling you right now.
You're pretty not running off though.
The thing is, dude, I don't, Dave, I like you, we've been friends for how long, buddy?
Okay.
I don't got a problem with Dave on that board at all. This ain't got nothing with Dave being on that board. If they'd have picked Dave, great, I'm happy with that. I would vote for him, and I will, next election. But my point is, tell the truth, do the right thing. That's why everybody gets so upset, because we feel like there is just so much corruption. We have one, think about this for a minute, just just let, hear me out. You have one elected official on that board, everybody else is appointed, that's BS. There's something wrong, proof's in the pudding. Something's wrong here. You agree? You're all voters, right? You're all taxpayers? Am I wrong? Everybody should have an equal chance to get on that board. And I understand how it went. I'm not dogging that fight. Jody's not, I'm not, thank Jody, it is what it is, no problem between me and you, Dave, between me and you. My problem is, you should, you should just said, Sean, I don't know. It's that easy.
I tried to find out, but when they don't pay, nothing.
She knows.
Hold on, so when there's a caucus, ideally, this is how it used to be, things change, I understand that. Does the public not have a minimum of ten-day notice that the caucus is going to be held? In that ten days, it gives people like Sean, anybody else, the opportunity to go fill out the proper paperwork to put their name down for that caucus.
Right.
However it works, after that. But his, this year, he feels that he was not informed properly. We all know, everyone here on this board knows that you have to contact Edlin to get those things done. I feel that you let him down, you dropped the ball by not following through in a timely manner for him. If you didn't know, you have other people, you have contacts to reach out in a timely manner. It's not like it was twenty-four hours ahead of time. He asked you in plenty of time for you to do your due diligence as a representative of this town to answer his questions.
Here's how much I knew, I told guy to sign it, then I got.
This is not your first caucus, this is not the first time that someone's had to be.
Yeah, but listen, this is how much I knew.
But you've been there long enough on that board, and you should know how it works.
Didn't tell you how?
Didn't tell me how?
How and where to go?
No, he told me to, he just said, hey, if you wanna try out for the town board, just uh, get a hold of Mr. Ed.
And and that's why.
In time?
No.
Sorry?
In time?
No, you know, like, well, he didn't have that time.
I'm like over.
Because Mr. Edlin, just so y'all know, I know it seems like he's got a little bad scar on him, but I'm telling you, the man was very nice to me, very professional. He called me back, and he said, I'm sorry, if you wanna fill your paperwork out, I'll try to turn it in. I said, let's get real. Let's get real, you know it's too late and they're not gonna accept it, they already know what they want. I already heard three other names, yours was one of them, your last name's Fox, right?
That is correct.
I'm Sean Bunch, by the way, nice to meet you, Mr. Fox. I heard Dave Elkins and I heard Jamie Gray.
Then you have a responsibility, when you step there, to be able to find these answers in a timely manner.
How this town's my friend, you can't say that, I ain't.
For people like us who don't know where to look, don't know where to start, that is part of your responsibility.
And communicate with the town.
Crazy, how do we communicate with the town? And it's highly mannered.
That's why we got delegates for the Democratic Party.
And was it notified ten days prior to the caucus or publicized, posted on the window, anything like that?
No.
Is it supposed to be? Do you know that? You should know that, you've been there long enough. It's not the first time.
Joe, that's Jody's responsibility, that ain't the town's.
Did you ask him? You're right there.
I never even seen, I never even received a resignation letter. I never even got to see a resignation letter.
And these are your delegates.
That's what I'm saying. Transparency and communication is key.
You're exactly right, okay, I'm a transparentist.
Nobody communicates with anybody up there. Exactly, it's not one person's fault.
Because that old thing Shane told me on the phone, by the way, on July seventeenth, that's how long I waited for an answer. July seventeen, I got on the phone, you all can look at me, I'll show you when I called him.
And and took the and turned in his letter until the thirty-fourth?
And you said he didn't turn it in yet. That's what you said that day, am I wrong?
No.
That's what you told me. You said he said it, I don't know if it's fish, but he hasn't turned it in. When I know, you'll know. That's what you said.
Transparency and communication needs to be priority, because if not, it makes everybody up here look incompetent.
Man, we got a mess here.
And like you've got alternative motives, which not, but not knowing what's going on, talking to each other creates havoc, creates questions, and it looks bad on the board, because nobody's communicating. They're telling, directing their people to the right place to go to get those answers.
It's just rough, you know what I mean? I I just don't understand why.
I've been there, I know.
And 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 it's not up to me, and I understand, it's not up to you. Wasn't up to you for Jody, wasn't up to you for Dave, I get that, that's not my problem. My problem is, I had no direction. I called the only one I knew on that board, I voted for, for direction and I didn't get it.
I didn't even know what day the caucus was.
But you could have followed through, man, you could have called Jody. Jody, you know how to get dick on there, you know how to look bigger, God, you had to do it, alright? Am I wrong? Correct. You sat right next to her, you couldn't have asked her, I'd have gone, oh, phone with you? I don't know Jody's number, I knew your number.
When when did you know the caucus was, Jody?
But you knew he stepped down.
No, I knew he stepped down, but when did you know the caucus was set up, Jody?
I think I got my letter that that Saturday. I I don't actually remember when I got that letter, but I know.
Three days before.
Three days before, right.
And you got seven days.
Friday when the caucus was, he set the caucus real close this time.
Well, he said you can get online and do it. That's what he said, I don't know. I just watched Joe.
I don't, I don't know.
And like, like I said, he even called me the day of the caucus and said, two other people have filled their paperwork in late, that they're not gonna accept, but I'm gonna give you the opportunity, Sean. That's exactly what the man told me. I'm, I'm, look, I don't lie, I'm just, I'm I'm an open book, you can ask anybody, if you don't know me, half these people in here do. It is what it is. It is what it is, but I'm I'm a man, just like you're a man, and I'm telling you to your face, I'm gonna see it polls. Because if these people are tired of this, go to the polls. Show them at the polls. Don't come in here lying, because all they're gonna do is talk about you behind your back, throw you out, call you disgruntled, that's what they're gonna do. Don't do it. You want something changed in this town? Phone and get it changed. David looks for good things, now you buddy, appreciate it.
Hi, I've got one question. I wanted to ask, uh, where it talks about animal cruelty, because I'm a big animal advocate. Um, well, I heard stories, but I just wondered what that involved.
Now, would we build art question, I don't know.
What was the question?
Animal cruelty.
The report, she's looking at the, um, police report.
At the report, that was one of them. And I know the story that I'm hearing, and I just wonder if they were true.
You probably need to talk to the police chief.
Yeah, I talked Phil, because I don't know on that.
Bill's gonna be in tomorrow.
He should be.
Or Dave's doing.
I was gonna say, I mean, if you have a general question, I don't know about the specific situation.
That's what I wanted to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
They say there's, there's something going around in town, and I just wanted to know.
I know you're big, I was just gonna say, prosecutor side could maybe insert, but I don't know anything specifically.
Okay, I'm answering. Uh, there's talk that somebody skinned a cat from the tail all the way up to the spine. It was found behind a lady's house in the alley. She picked it up and took it to a vet and had it euthanized.
It was North Seventh Street.
North where?
Seventh Street.
Hmm, so you know about it?
So they made it arrest on there?
Oh, I don't think so.
But they, they don't know, I don't, I, well, you know, they're doing that to, that probably had to be a, an owned cat, because feralists won't come to you to allow you to do anything, so it had to be somebody's cat.
It was Heather Robinson, she took it, she, I think she, something to do with Heather Robinson, but there's like literally a hundred cats next door. There's all kinds of them, they just keep having cats.
Yeah, there's, so one that lives next door to them has uh, two mother cats in the house, and they each have kittens, plus there's ten on the outside. When she has called the police, the police have told her that they should come up and shoot them if that's what she wanted, there was nothing else they could do. I mean, this has been going on for as long as I can remember, but, you know, that's, that's why people that are animal advocates.
I know.
That's what we're always told.
I mean, obviously that would be a crime if they, you know, but I don't, I don't know what those statutes is, I don't.
Well, so it must be true then, so.
I don't think I, I haven't seen anything, I don't know anything about it. But I mean, I know that they, the town has investigated, trying to look into, um, you know, the humane shelters now, they're all completely full, they won't accept people. I've tried to personally tried to call different, like Allen County ones, to see if we could set up some kind of partnership with them or something. They won't accept and don't, they're basically only concerned about their in-county stuff. And then the only other option would be the town actually trying to fund it, but there's no one for that.
Well, there's no place to take them. Park Vermillion used to take our animals, but I've taken many up there, but when Don Lars was uh, on the board.
Animal care clinic in Marshall, Illinois is a cheap pain neater.
They had me to come up and rescue this little pit bull because Donnie was threatened to shoot it, so that's, sorry on that.
If I else?
I don't. Ordinance on cutting grass, I know there's a process. The house next to me, south of me, for over two years, has been abandoned. It's falling apart, it's not livable, it needs, it's condemned by West Tera Hope. I went over to Vago County to ask them to condemn it, look at it, and they said, no, we can't do that, you have to go through your town council. Like, hold up, when I do an improvement on my house, I have to get a permit from the county to do anything. How come they cannot come over here and condemn something? It's no different. Permit to improve, permit, permit to condemn. You have already posted a sign on there. The grass is no kidding, up to the top row on my fence. If it, to get it cut, I have to make a report over and over and over. At what point in over two years do we, have we recouped our money from Stephanie cutting it, first of all? I know you have to serve a letter, give them so much time, then we file it against their taxes.
I do believe Tommy, Tommy has been in contact with the property owner.
Yeah, he cut the front yard while I was gone, November fourth, they didn't touch the backyard, and now it's as tall as the front yard and backyard is the same. I've got wild animals, feral animals, all kinds of bugs and everything else. I can't let my dog out to go pee at two o'clock in the morning without going waking up the whole neighborhood, because there's all kinds of animals in that yard getting in and out of the basement, which, foundation, which is crumbling. I have to go to my yard, pick up everything that's falling off of that house, we're talking about shingles, glass, everything. Somebody else don't get hurt because of that stuff's laying in my yard. What do I do about that? But at what point do we say we are no longer going to even give you a certified letter to to cut the grass? You're gonna have to do something about this house, either tear it down or fix it up. What are the ordinances, what are the rules for that? Because I can't even get Vago County to come over here and officially condemn it.
What are our rights as a town?
Yeah.
To to go in, we can't, we can't.
It's not livable.
We can't do intimate domain, we can't, we don't have the right to go in.
So it depends on the ordinance they're cited under, what power they have to own, for instance. I know we just took a couple and got orders in the court to go in, um, cut the property, but then.
Right, this is life, this whole house is not livable.
Well, now, I mean, it depends on what is cited, you know, it depends on what the town, you know, has in.
Well, that's what I'm saying, nobody knows what nobody's doing. Yeah, they might give him a ten-day notification to come cut the grass, well, two weeks later, it's gonna be this tall again. Do I have to come up here or call every time it needs cut? I mean, honestly, a blind man can go by there and know it needs cut. Jody, you drive by there every day, it's horrible.
And you know what, I went, there was rugs and stuff on the porch, and I pulled the rugs off of the porch and laid them over the grass so that the grass wouldn't rot.
Oh, yeah, no, that's. And it's hard. Right, but now it's back up to that tall, yeah.
I've done that before, you know?
The backyard's horrible. But it's not anything that's gonna change. We need to find what process it is for either him to tear it down, not on the town's bill, but on his bill, or to fix it up, because this is ridiculous. It's just sitting there, doing what, nothing but inviting the homeless to live there.
What is going on, waiting on this building here on Sixth Street.
Contributing to the mosquito.
What's the latest on that? That's gonna kill somebody. On the, nice, Delphine Chau.
This is right across, just from where?
Right down here beside the taverns.
Yeah, right.
Delphine Chau.
The town's gonna be in lawsuit.
Oh.
It's ready, Paul, I wonder.
Oh, he's.
It it's condemned, you're just.
It's condemned, damn.
Yeah, condemned, ain't no safe line.
It is condemned by the county or by West Tera Hope, because there's a difference. I've already been over there, and they're giving me the runaround. They said I have to come over here and have you condemn it.
Yeah.
It's already on there, but it's not officially condemned according to the state and the county's ordinance.
That's right.
That guy's supposed to be selling that, because the paperwork's all messed up on the titles, and.
Right, and he has a purchaser, but.
So David is supposed to quit with plan.
The town has their protection over that, so if it's harming, can harm the citizens or endanger
Okay, but what about the primary?
to any citizen of the town of West Tera Hope. It's in the ordinance, just not unless it's been taken out. You're in charge of protecting the people of West Tera Hope, and that building is condemned, and you can see through the roof, it's been sitting that way, it's already flat once. And not going to part the flats again. And somebody's gonna get hurt or killed, some kid.
The ordinance is all the grass, I mean, it can't be so high, right?
So, yeah.
So, so I know, no.
I know there's no weapons officer, but nobody's enforcing the ordinance.
I mean, so it just depends on the circumstances.
Stephanie's been cutting it, Stephanie's, and there isn't there a.
If we go or if somebody else is probably.
We totally know.
So I don't know what we're supposed to do here.
That's what I'm thinking. And every time we put a lien, every time she goes, we could put a fifty-dollar lien. But then also, we have to pay a fine, and are we ever going to? Because from what I understand, when they send a notice, it goes to an address, to a company, and there's like no address, there's no company. They're they're dead in address. Uh, yes, yes, supposedly she tried to sell it, it was condemned.
They had me and Stephanie, there was roaches coming out, no roads, we was out there stomping roaches.
Right, right.
And what compared me and Stephanie, that we had to go up in that yard and spray, I'm not joking you, I was a fellow.
In that house, they sleep in that? This is the house on the next one.
And fleas, I jumped out, and Stephanie, and she got out because I had so many bugs.
That was, oh, yeah, I had.
It's condemned, and so nobody's allowed on that property. So now what do you do? Nobody is allowed on that property, it's condemned.
And Anthony.
Someone who is responsible to tear it down, owner, in my case, the one next door to me. But every time we go cut the grass, instead of charging me ten or thirty dollars, sometimes it'll be eight hundred, a thousand dollars, maybe they'll do something about it. But till then, it's not his problem, he doesn't live here, it's my trouble, makes my dog sick, makes the neighborhood look like crap, and it's gonna get worse.
We cut it, we have the curb, it's getting tore down.
But this is so bad, because you, I mean, the foundation, you can't even walk in there, it's, the roof is halfway gone, water damage inside. I wanna know what the plan is, or how to get the ball rolling, to either get it tore down, or get, hold him responsible to do what he's supposed to do. And I can't do that without knowing proper ordinances and having your account Florida back. No, he doesn't live in Florida, Dr. Gupta has that, he died, he has sold it, it belongs to a gentleman in Indianapolis. He's been there twice, Gupta is not owner. He lived in Boca Raton, he's not the owner. And I'm the one that told him about it, how to get it holding the first time. He has sold that house since then.
Tommy's doing the ordinances.
Well, there's no new ordinance on that door. There's no violation.
Enforce from the last one.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's not tagged. There's no label tag on that door.
You know, like, again, why can't you just enforce the condemnation? It's what we do in Brucastle. I mean, it's condemned. You send the notices out. You go in, you condemn it, and then you put that lien on the front door.
They, they picked up your car in that short a time and that sticker on there. Why can't they go in? Is that what you're saying? Why can't they go in?
That is exactly. I wasn't gonna say it, but I might be did, but you know, I mean, there's, again, the ordinance is, which I still don't have a copy yet. But the ordinance, I should say, in your own ordinance is enforcing the way this was being enforced. I think you could solve a lot of these problems. I mean, I I can remember, I've, I've lived for, I've lived in Wester, I've lived in Wester, I'm still Wester, who grow harder, but you know, it seems like that's the steps that we need to be taking here to help make this better.
One, one second. Even though there's no ordinance officer, I get that. Each police officer is responsible to enforce the laws of West Terre Haute, correct? Which includes all the ordinances. We shouldn't have to have a specific officer to enforce these ordinances. They should all be able to say, hey, that grass is tall. We need to write them up. We need to let them know. Nobody's doing that except one person. It shouldn't be one person on his shoulders to do the whole town. Whenever a cop drives around this town and says the same thing.
We're running into people doing it at ten o'clock at night, trying to.
Or whether it doesn't.
Daytime officers, they, just, let's just say daytime officers.
I mean.
Any daytime officer could.
Anybody can do.
Tommy Roberts is working very diligently with the process he's been given, which is working through Jared, through a judge in town, who dictates how the process should go.
Right.
And that process is working, is really, really slow. Also, we, we have talked many times on how to pay to go and step into this. And if it's a tip district, there's a little bit of money available for that. If it's in the town, there's really no money available. We're tick toting through a financial crisis here. We're not talking about. But, but in this process, these things are growing all around you. But all we can suggest is we're doing the best we can with the resources currently available. And it is not, it is an overwhelming task. Everything you've talked about today is bearing us all alive at work. But the administrative process is all of this handled because we have to do it a certain way, we have to fund it a certain way, and we have to allocate each money at, at a different rate for each of these circumstances. The town is not in a position financially to take things home all at once.
But here's the thing, I understand the process. I'm there on that side. So I get that. I understand how it works. But getting to someone to start the process and be consistent and quit doing the same thing over and over, why do we keep doing the same thing for the same person? That's ridiculous.
Tommy's got bored of.
He can do, please, come in here. If it's a consistent problem, same person over and over, why just give them little notices, a little penalty here or there? This particular case, every time you go, let them know it's gonna be increased more and more to make it worth our while so the town can recoup and he can do more because he'll have more funds. But right now, he, he's chasing his tail because nothing is getting done, not even in my case, the ordinance or a notification that he's not being compliant. There's no reason, he, I can't, nobody can do anything until we keep ticketing that door, that house. It's, that's the problem. It's not happening.
Well, progressively speaking, yes, it would make sense to have somebody more local. We, we use, uh, what's called unify the ordinances. We take over what the county has and we kinda try to use them until we write our own.
But we're not following our own orders. That's what I'm saying.
So, we can work in that direction. The, the instance where you guys come in and have these conversations puts the priority more on the front burner. But I watched, I watched Tommy work. He's working with a system that's kinda slow. And he makes, makes him go back and make another. It was just that something, the sentence is not correct. He has to rewrite that sentence and start over again. And it is one guy. And I don't know that we, I don't know if he could afford to court and force a mouser.
No, we don't need one. The cops, every problem Wester, who can do. Do an ordinance, or do a citations and your grass is too tall. It doesn't have to be Tommy.
It's quite possible.
Tommy's about to do it, Jonathan does.
But he's in here saying.
I'm gonna butt in here when she's done, okay? Everybody don't understand how all that works. Tommy is, he really is working his butt in. But, but listen, here's what you all don't understand. You gotta get over, you gotta serve those people with a paper. Get it in front of a judge. And if you talk to Tommy, Tommy's trying to do that. Tommy has got more done. When Larry and Jim then was on there, Jim knows how it works. And, and it's, it don't happen overnight. You can't just go on somebody's property and do this. I completely understand what she's saying. And these people out of state advise taxes, houses here, they don't care because they don't live here. So when you send Stephanie to mow the yard, don't charge him a hundred and fifty dollars. Charge him a thousand dollars. Put a lien on the property. If they go to sell it, it's gotta be sold, okay? And I told you, guy, I mean, the other, I don't know. You know, I used to be a sefer. I know what I'm talking about, right or wrong. But Tommy has done a lot. Tommy's even took his own time, quit from this town to help clean up something. And people don't realize what Tommy has really done. Tommy's done a lot. But when you come to, when it comes to go in front of that judge, them judges is booked a year out or whatever, so it takes a while. But I understand what she's saying and I seen Tommy down there. When there was a guy there, he might've been the owner. But they don't care. They don't live here in our town. So the only way you're gonna hurt them, get in their pocketbook, okay? Get in their wallet.
Every time. But it should be on one officer.
Yes.
No, well, but see, the problem is, the reason they went to one officer and I, the reason Tommy took that on is because you'd have this officer over here telling one thing, and then when Tommy went there, it's different. So they, they, that's the reason why Tommy took it on. And, and Tommy's done a lot. Yes, and Tommy don't treat anybody different. He takes them all the same and he gives them a chance to take care of the problem.
And then you gotta seat no cars, they're all on their own roads.
Right.
They got cars on nowhere, but you can't get them to cut grass, call them their own.
Roots don't come to speed.
I don't get it.
Yeah, well, Shane, I was a cheer issue for you guys. Steph was.
Tommy that's got cars.
Mr. Loyles? Turned around. Yeah. I come here just, I have one simple fact. I need six signs, um, in West Terre Haute. One from the cheerleader and five for the volleyball players on the poles like the football players had. Now, that's all I wanted, huh?
How many?
Six signs.
The question I have is, do we have six brackets that will hold the banners? Okay, if we have, because brackets is the problem here. And do you have the kind of banners that will fit our brackets?
We are gonna call over there, the same place they got the football banners, we're getting these banners, the same size.
Okay, and, and when will they, when will you, when will they be here? Do you know?
Uh, I'll let somebody know. We haven't ordered them because we said we couldn't get them.
Okay, yeah, so yes, we can, yes, we can do that.
Yeah, you know that, Johnny. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, I got one question. I'm on Eighth or Seventh Street. Steph, what's, what's the girl across the street where they're dumping raw sewage in the backyard? What's that?
Uh, my name, across my.
Across from you, what, what is that?
Aiden, Aiden, Aiden.
They got people living in the back part of their house in a room, but they're dumping raw sewage out in the backyard, okay? And the girl next door on the other side, when I was mowing my property, she, she started, you know, I said, I will bring it up.
Send our officer up there right now.
What?
We were sending our police officer up there right now to go check it out.
Well, go in the backyard. I, Steph can tell you. I don't know. I own the vacant lot next door.
If I else, go once, go twice, been injured.
It's been emotionally.
I'm over. I know I put that. It's looked like, I guess, yeah. I was like looking up here and I. I know. Yeah.